Okay, I am now going to go ahead and commence and call to order our study session for the evening. And for that, we always get started with our purpose and agenda, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Stallow.
Thank you. Good evening. Congratulations, Dr. Thomas, and welcome to the district. We're so glad you have chosen Fire Lake Savagerya Schools. The purpose of study sessions is for board members and administration to share information, to ensure that board members have all the information they need to have efficient and effective decision-making at the board table, and to build trust and ensure capacity building as we move forward. This evening, on the agenda, there are a couple areas of operational oversight that we'll be taking a look at. First of all, we'll hear a little bit of review of the district stakeholder surveys. We'll also hear an update on the strategic direction. The second part of strategic direction number five, dealing with crisis management. We'll review the preliminary budget with Executive Director Sync. Also at that time, Jim Coram will provide a little bit of an update on some staffing. I know there were some requests on that. And then we'll also bring forward, I've got a team here to provide you with the draft of the priority work for next year that Dr. Thomas will be taking the lead on with an amazing team that will be joining him. Then there are several policies that we'll be taking a look at for a review. And then we'll be going into some closed sessions after that.
Great, thank you. Next up, always during a study session, we like to begin with a review of the key areas of board responsibilities and roles, and how they line up to our strategic direction, and what we will be addressing in tonight's study session. Under district policy, again, we are going through quite a few. We have the 400s, 500s, 600s, 700s, 800s, and 900s listed. Under operational oversight, we will have a report this evening on our crisis management work, and the development and implement of a district emergency plan. Also, under operational oversight, we will, as Dr. Stallow mentioned, have an update on our budget. Under superintendent relations, we will be doing a closed session this evening for the superintendent evaluation. And under public engagement, we will also be getting a report on a stakeholder survey in the community. So we've got a pretty full agenda, and we will go forward from there. And we will start with strategic direction number six. Engage students, parents, families, and community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion. And information on our stakeholder engagement survey with Chris Lynn Goodman, our Director of Assessment, Evaluation, and District Improvement.
All right, thanks. And Terry will be kicking that off, or I will be?
I, why don't you go ahead and kick it off?
Okay. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I will be sharing an update of the PLSAS annual stakeholder survey. We value stakeholder perceptions because of that. We listen to the voices of our stakeholders to learn how to best plan and improve moving forward. It's really a challenge to present the kind of rich data we have for you tonight in a short presentation, so I am going to be moving pretty quickly through it. But please know that administrators will be continuing to analyze the data, working with their staff to understand it. I'll be there to support that. We'll be reviewing trends and determining improvement strategies that are needed based on that. All right, so we will start with the connection to the strategic plan, as we always do. So this is, you know, the survey and the focus groups are all around engaging students, parents, families, and the community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion. It really connects to other strategic directions around measuring student learning, reducing achievement gaps. It's baked right into the vision and our core values as well. The goal we set around the strategic direction to engage students, parents, families, and the community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion was to add focus groups to our annual surveys. So I'm going to take you through some of those. So we'll start reviewing the stakeholder survey this year. To keep the survey in attractive length and focus it on the most important feedback, we continued with the reduced number of items. And to be able to continue the year-to-year comparisons, we maintained survey items that appear on the district scorecard as well. We added items last year to address the pandemic and social-emotional aspects, and we maintained those this year. And then focus groups were also really important this year to get wide and varied perceptions. So for the third year in a row, I ran different focus groups along with some support within the district. About 20 focus groups took place, about 200 participants, families, staff, students, administrators. And this year, the one thing that's different is we first, or I first analyzed all of the results from the survey. And then when I found things that were either surprising, or really different, or just things that are part of our scorecard that I wanted to ask more questions to understand the why behind, those were what I included in the focus groups as questions. And then the other change is with Dr. Stallow's upcoming departure, we eliminated superintendent items. All right, throughout these graphs, you're going to see these colors repeated. So orange always signifies certified staff, the gold is elementary students, light blue are the secondary students, educational support staff is the gray, and the darker blue are the parents and guardians. So this year, we had participation rates that moved around a little bit. We saw some steep increases in both certified staff and educational support staff. Elementary students held really steady. There was a slight decrease in secondary students, and we did also see an increase with parents and guardians as well. So I am now going to take you through some graphs and show trends over the past six years that will provide us with some data that's going to help us improve, as well as the results of open-ended items from the surveys with some quotes. Remember again, like, the questions for the focus groups were devised out of items from the survey. We're going to take it in the order of the strategic directions. We won't have fiscal accountability as part of these because that's not something that we ask about on the survey. So we'll start with student engagement. And this graph shows student and parent guardian perceptions of students liking to go to school. Secondary student responses, although lower than last year, were still within the range that they have been over the past six years. And parent and guardian perceptions of students liking to go to school remained really steady from last year. Represented here are student perceptions of their culture, religion, or ethnic heritage, represented by other students, or respected by other students, which increased noticeably this year. So we based a focus group question on that in the feedback to help us understand the why behind this change. We wanted to know more from students about the increase in respect of their culture, religion, or ethnic heritage, and the student quotes here broadly illustrate the responses of students. In the past year, through opportunities like caring and committed conversations and cultural celebrations, students have had experiences affirming their experiences and bridging differences. The next slides are aligned with the learner experience. So this was a year when our focus was really around stability and focusing on what our students need. So notable is the stability in our secondary students reporting about their teachers knowing how to teach so that they can learn. This really speaks to the exceptionally high quality of the teachers we have, the flexibility that they have displayed, and the way they're able to innovate and personalize learning, adapting to all different situations and multiple learning modes. Again, based on the responses of the survey, we formed focus group questions, this time asking about what it was that teachers do that helps students learn. And these three quotes encapsulate the frequent responses of teachers, caring and helping in genuine ways and setting students up for success. We now look at innovative ideas and practices. So although educational support staff did not report much change over the years, certified staff reported that their environment supported innovative ideas and practices less so than in previous years. The past two years have been marked by teachers' constant flexibility and ability to do things in different ways, yet that was not reflected in the survey, so this is an area for further study. We will now look at responses about a safe environment. And this year, as a district, we knew it was so important to feel cared about. It's really positive to see student connections staying so strong. This item is from the open-ended part of the survey. We wanted to find out about what students feel like when they're cared about, and we see the importance of being heard, being connected, and providing a wide array of opportunities and challenges answering that question. In this year's items about feeling safe and secure in school, secondary students reported feeling less so than in previous years. It'll be really interesting to compare this result to the Minnesota Student Survey results, which we should be receiving those in the coming month, and we'll report about those when it has been analyzed. So again, because of the change in results here, we asked students directly in focus groups about feelings of safety. And students repeatedly talked about two types of safety, both emotional and physical. And above quotes are responses in the affirmative, and help us know how to continue to support students through positive adult relationships and practical measures that students mentioned, like safety drills and locked doors. Our last area is around engagement. One of the questions we have asked for the past six years is about Laker pride. We did see a significant decrease in this area, and therefore asked about it in our focus groups. Staff have experienced a very hard year, and we are continuing to find ways to support every employee. It's important that staff feel pride for PLSAS, and focus groups and conversations with staff helped us explore the why behind those reported changes this year. In addition to racial harm incidents, division in the community was brought up by staff, and the need for unified community support for teachers and schools in the form of class sizes, staff workload, negotiations that were difficult and lasted longer, racist incidents, and being compared to other districts financially, and recognizing that we operate in a more bare-bones way. Staff also told us what does make them proud to be a Laker, and overwhelmingly, the themes were the relationships between teachers and students, the community dedication, and the feeling of staff as an extended family of support. The positive examples were overwhelming, and I wanted to share some more quotes. So here are a couple more quotes from staff. We asked these questions of families as well, and the following themes came out of school spirit, music, and athletic programs, so speaking to a really holistic experience for students, as well as great, caring teachers. I bring this up, this slide up in the Laker pride section because the areas for growth within PLSAS contribute to feelings of pride. Those are communication and consistency, student support, staffing and subbing issues, and many initiatives. We'll now move on to items referring to the school board. So responding to feedback about past surveys, this year we kept a response for parents and guardians who might not feel informed about the school board, so that was unsure. So in addition to strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, unsure was also an option. Overall, satisfaction is depicted here, which dropped perceptibly in the past year. So I looked at open-ended comments from the stakeholder survey to give some more insight into the change. Family comments ranged from a desire for more transparency in spending, small class sizes, and challenging curriculum, as well as reflecting gratitude for the past two years of service especially. Certified staff mentioned a desire for lower class sizes, more timely contract negotiation, and increased visibility in schools. Gratitude was also expressed by staff for the past two years of service. We'll shift our focus to open-ended responses from the survey and focus group interviews. So this is a time where I just want to say thank you to every individual who responded. This information is really valuable, and it is really used in our decision-making. So we'll now look at what some more of those community responses were, reflecting a really wide range of experiences and opinions. So these were the main two questions asked on the survey. What worked well, something that should continue, and what do we want that student experience to be like? So we'll see some themes and quotes in the coming slides. So students and families really agreed on these, on this list of what worked well this year. And when asking about the experience desired, that helps us understand where we need to keep putting emphasis on our planning and programming. The theme academically challenging here represents families desiring academic rigor, as well as those who said schools should be academic only without social and emotional learning opportunities. Staff told us that there is support and resources needed in order for that student experience to be the best that it can be. And then moving on to overall themes from student focus groups, positive takeaways are noted here. And overall, for families, these five themes came up the most consistently, with both concerns and approval expressed within these, with the exception of the amount of screen time which was only expressed as a concern. When we asked about one thing that PLSAS does really well, these were four of the main themes that emerged. And these three quotes, which encapsulate our parents and guardians' ideas for improvement within the district. Staff talked about many things that PLSAS does well, a few of which are noted here. And the overall themes of staff focus groups around PLSAS strengths, you'll find in this slide. All right, our next steps as we move forward with the results of the stakeholder survey are to continue sharing results with stakeholders, so that will be shared on our website. This slide presentation will now be able to be shared at school buildings. We'll review and analyze the results with the administrators in buildings, different department teams. We'll be continuing work, or starting work actually, with Studer, so that consultancy will really help us refine and continue to go further, especially with incoming Superintendent Dr. Michael Thomas as he takes the reins. And then we will always be looking back at these in the coming year, developing district and building goals over the summer. And then once those are developed, looking back at them, seeing how different metrics are met throughout the school year. We'll be implementing improvement plans based on that, and then reviewing the whole survey and focus group process to seek improvement for next year, a key part of that being with our Studer work. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Open it up for questions. Mary.
When you were going through the slide and showing the percentages, how are those percentages calculated?
That is the percentage of people who responded strongly agree or agree, and then out of the total number of people who took the survey. The only place where that's different is calculating the participation rates, where it is the number of people who participated in the survey divided by the number of people who are in that category in the district.
So there was four options, strongly agree, agree.
Disagree, strongly disagree, and then unsure in situations where a person could possibly not have an opinion, or where they might not have experience of the school board, for example.
Would it be possible for us to have access to the actual where they responded to?
Yes, in fact, that is all after this meeting, that will be published on the website, and that's available for everyone. So you'll be able to see every item, and then the percentages of people who responded in each of those categories.
And my second question, if that's okay? I'm sure we're just getting a percentage of key comments that was represented of the people who took the survey. Unless I'm wrong on that, unless these are all the comments that were made, or is just?
No, so my process was, on the survey, I received that information back, went through and categorized each of the comments into a different theme. And then the themes that were the most commonly noted, I put it as themes. If there was a comment that related to one of those that sort of encapsulated the comment, or that theme a little bit better, I included it in the slideshow. Then with the focus groups, people gave all sorts of information. I went through that same process of looking at which, or I would code them, so they would fall into different buckets, different categories, and I would do that same process of which came up most frequently. Those were the themes, and then I would go back and look for quotes that came from those themes.
I know that you said that you still have to, there's lots of investigation left to do. But what stood out to me was there was, you know, the PLSA brand, PLSAS brand, but then the strong comments about teachers, and most people only see the school district from their teachers. And that was kind of inversely related, not up and down like a seesaw at the base, but definitely not necessarily in line. And I was wondering if that, if you broke it down and look at the people who only put strongly agree, if that would bring it a little bit more, I mean, the people who just put agree and weren't really strongly, if that would align it better, if you know what I mean?
So that question's actually only addressed to certified staff and educational support staff. So I just additionally asked families because I was interested if staff was saying that they weren't as proud. What is it like in families? And I did not find the same decrease in families, but I also don't have information from past years.
Okay, that makes sense. Anybody else?
I'm going to, but go ahead, finish yours.
And then one of the other questions that I had was, based upon the feedback about the teachers, how it went straight up when it says the teachers got to know me better. Was that correlated with any comments from teachers? Because I know I've heard some about how, even though the whole pandemic and remote work was, you know, and remote schooling was not a good thing for anybody, but they did get a better view, sometimes particularly at the elementary level, into the students' daily lives, which helped them understand the circumstances. And I was wondering if that was correlated at all, or are you going to still try to find that out?
Like, from teacher responses, that wasn't something that came up this year. I think, like, when this, like, when the focus groups were happening was April. And so that was actually, like, in time, pretty far removed from remote learning, so it might just have been enough in the rearview that it wasn't something that came up.
Okay, thanks.
Stacy.
I just have a couple comments. I just wanted to kind of give kudos to Dr. Stallow and Chris Lynn about this. When I first was on the board, whatever, how many, too long ago, 11 years ago, there was not really a lot of consistency in our surveys, and that was a critique that came forward. And I think being able to have this year after year, and to really be able to see the value in what it's showing us, I think has been really important these last six years because it wasn't necessarily, you know, just the normal practice. And so to be able to have this, and to have this data, and to see, I think for me, you know, there's some hard stuff on here, and I think it is reflective of the year. Do I love that people don't think the school board, I mean, yeah, it's not great. But in the same sense, I would say this, the most important slides for me are about what's happening with the students. And I see really good numbers there, I mean, considering everything. So for me, the fact that I like going to school, I mean, it's pretty good. I mean, you know what I mean? And then my culture, my religion, and ethnic is respected, I mean, that is impressive. To have that go up that much to show that, you know, that work is being done, and it's being reflective in our students. For me, those are the most important ones, because it's the student's experience. So I just wanted to give kudos out to that. And, you know, to that we're showing this stuff, I mean, each and every year. I mean, so it's, some of the parts aren't great, but it shows us where we need to work on and where to improve, and we are doing some really good work, so.
And we'll continue to refine the survey, working with Studer next year.
That's what I was going to ask. My one question would be like, so now Studer really didn't have, like, didn't have any.
Nothing to do with that.
Yeah, and we're going to be able to continue, like, if we decide that those are metrics that we want in the future, and we'll also be able to tap into their resources that will have some nationally-normed items for us, where we will be able to compare, instead of just to ourselves, year-on-year, like, what's happening at a national level, so.
Yeah, that'll be exciting, so that's cool. So thank you for all that work on that.
Other comments or questions? Jonathan?
I would just say the one slide for me is, you know, we talk personalized learning. And when there's a question that is, my teachers know how to teach, so I can learn. And we see 99% yes from elementary kids and 93% from our secondary kids. That's gratifying.
For sure. Other comments or questions, Dr. Stallow?
I just wanted to add, you know, in addition to what Jonathan just said, you know, I remember when we kicked off the year in August, and we knew recovery and coming back from the pandemic was going to be difficult, and we knew what our staff and teachers were going to have to do. And we focused, right at the very beginning workshop, we focused on social-emotional learning and integrated that with equity. We knew how important it was going to be. We had a district goal of greeting each student by name at the door, and making sure that we were meeting the academic and social-emotional needs of each student. And Jonathan, that slide that you pointed out with my teachers know how to teach, so I can learn, I mean, that is after two years of a pandemic, that our teachers not only continue to increase their pedagogy, their personalized learning, but coming out of a pandemic, that that many students, especially those secondary students, that is not an easy crowd. So that's very, very impressive. And I think the other one, the other slide that I just want to call out is my culture, religion, or ethnic heritage is respected by other students. We've had some really difficult racial harm incidents throughout our district. And as our district theme of being, we are PLSAS all-in, we have been all-in as a board, as an administrative team, our staff across the district and our community, and really seeking ways to improve that. And again, if we can see these increases and sustain it, and it's not 100%, and we're far from perfect, but to come out of some of the difficulties that we came out of this year, for our students to have these results, I think are really important. And as Kristen said, we've got plenty of areas to continue to improve on, including those. But thanks for calling out those student experience, Stacy, I think that was really important. And I just want to thank Chris Lynn, the time that she has put into, you know, it's one thing to take a survey, but then that's not enough for her. Then she says, we've got to find out more, and went ahead with a very small team this year of doing focus groups to really understand what those numbers meant. So just want to thank you and your team for the work that you've done. Great job.
Thanks so much.
I'm just going to add a couple comments. I want to follow up on what you said. I think it's interesting, if you looked at just the headlines from racial harm incidents and compared that to the data you collected from over the year, it's important to weigh those two things and say, it's not always just what's in the news that explains our student experience here. Also, I think some of the work that you've done to drill down or do focus group work tells us areas we might have to do a better job telling our story, or even defining terms like SEL. I think there's confusion. So when you hear, we only want to do reading and math and not SEL, but you find out that kids feel like their culture and religion and ethnicity is valued, or that teachers are teaching so they can understand. I think that's all connected, and so that might be more on us as a district to clarify what some of the confusion is around some of those terms. And finally, obviously, we'll be eager to follow up. I know there's next steps for all of the buildings and everything else, but for the school board as well, to drill down a little bit more. And is that a product of a really hard year with some really hard decisions? Or is there more to it that needs to be worked on through staff, you know, board retreat, et cetera? So I appreciate your thoroughness. I know you read every single comment and carried them all in your heart, and grateful for your work and for everybody who participated. Thanks.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please, Amy.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris Lynn. It's wonderful, really well done, and I love the way you present. The one disconnect I see, and I think everybody in this room probably sees it, but we don't talk about it enough in terms of telling our story. We have super-high expectations in our community as teachers, administrators, families, students, everybody. And there's a disconnect between that and things like smaller class sizes. And so we keep hearing that theme, and we keep wanting that, and I know personally, everyone in this room wants that. But that costs money, and we like to do more with less. And that's a, that's a good attribute, too. But what we need to get better at in our community is talking about that, that there's a tipping point where we can't do more with less anymore. Like, we actually need more resources. If we really want to have these high expectations, then put your money where your mouth is. And that's just being super-honest about, like, when I walk away from this, what I see. The other thing I just quickly want to say just personally is, it was a hard year, and it's okay that the board's taking that impact. I'm totally good with that. It's way better than our teachers taking it. Obviously, they're, you know, connecting with our kids, which is so important. And I just want, I hope that we can learn and get better and own it for our community, I guess.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Chris Lynn. Okay, next we'll be talking about crisis management under strategic direction number five, providing a safe, secure, and supportive environment that nurtures the social and emotional well-being of all learners. And it looks like Jim Delwell and Kate Kyle will be doing the presentation this evening.
Kate's really excited to talk about something other than COVID with y'all. So we're really excited to see you, and her breadth of expertise is able to be shared this evening. Thanks, Kate and Jim.
Yes, good evening. We are going to go to our strategic direction number five B. Now that SRM has been operationalized, we decided to focus on the manual. Slide, please. So the contributors on this group are John Beazak, Kate Kyle, myself, and Maureen Mullin. Also did a lot of work on this one. Again, we align all our work to strategic direction, provide a safe, secure, and... Again, we align all our work to strategic direction, provide a safe, secure, and supportive environment that nurtures the social and emotional well-being of all learners. Strategic direction number five is provide a safe, secure, and supportive environment that nurtures the social and emotional well-being of all learners. Five A was social-emotional learning, and five B is focused on crisis management. Strategic direction five B, the purpose, a district emergency plan including prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, which acknowledges the potential for harm to occur to the school environment, will continue to be developed and implemented to address safety and security of our learning community with plans for response and reunification if needed. Our goals for last year were review the crisis management plan with administrators to collect feedback to ensure manuals are up to date, update the drill checklist required to track required drills by building administrators, and expand the onboarding to new staff to collude the crisis management plan. Interestingly enough, the binder, it's a big thick binder, Maureen Mullin and I, with some help, went out to every single site to kind of show how it works. It's really tied to policy, that's an important, uh-huh, and we will be bringing, excuse me, policy 806 at a later date, after we've gathered all of the information from our meetings to update the manual. Checklist, that's one of the accomplishments, team updated the drill and incident checklist so that we're uniform and consistent in our reporting. Also developed an after-action report for a clear and easy process for administrators so we can follow regarding required drills and incidents and any other issues that come up. Process also ensures directive operations can easily access such checklist onsite to verify compliance for officials such as state fire marshal. When we have state fire marshal visit, first thing we want to do is look at that book. And staff onboarding, we're, as part of onboarding, we're starting to focus more on crisis in the manual and videos just to support the crisis work in the district. The review, again, I'll highlight that again, we, the original plan was to have a couple of learning leader meetings or senior leader meetings and go through the book, it was a tough year for everybody, and so we decided to focus individual. I think the benefit of that was that we, everybody has a really clear understanding on how that manual works now. Recommendations for next year, develop and add district, two district, policy 806. So, we gather a lot of feedback during our year, and we'll make some recommendations for policy change. A new procedure for district crisis management policy before and after school hours, emergency procedures, that's a big focus for us next year. We have a lot of use in our buildings, on our fields, after hours, what we want to get better at handling, excuse me, emergencies after hours, and develop and add to district policy 806, section three, new procedure for emergency action plan for district pools, another hole we have. And there's some other things we're working on, too. Sorry to take so much time, are there any other questions?
Do we have any questions this evening, or comments? Mary?
Well, first of all, you guys have come a long way, a long way, and I know this all started before the pandemic, but really impressive. In the policy, I do have a couple of questions, are we going to have now a standard incident response test, or is it just a tabletop or similar to kind of validate any of this stuff as included with our other emergency plans to make sure these are working and actionable or functional?
So, we actually have, a couple of times during the year, Mary, we'll have a community crisis response, and that's a drill. We have district crisis response, we meet more than quarterly, but that's the base, to, again, to go over this and to work through issues. And then, we have in the last couple of years, done standard reunification drill, and that's coming up this year, June 13th.
We also had multiple events that we talked about in our district crisis response team that we need to start capturing some of those, and then going back and really talking about what went well, what didn't go well, so that administrators can look back at some of the big events we had, especially this year, and just make sure that we have good plans developed for those.
I love lessons learned, postmortems, after actions, they're, they're useful for everything, not just this. And I know you've done it before, but I was kind of wondering, do we have a normal cadence going forward of this planned out? The, the first ones that were done, I mean, you talked about them at other study sessions, I just, so I know they've been done, and I know they were challenging during COVID, although some of them were actually tested during that time, too. Do we have a normal cadence going on year after year, like, this quarter we test this, this, once a year we do the whole thing, you know, something like that?
I, I think, Mary, you're talking standard reunification, that's the drill I think you're talking about?
Well, we had the reunification one, but I thought we also, before the pandemic, had a tabletop, that wasn't just, reunification was part of it, but I thought we had a full emergency.
And that's an annual exercise we have annually with our district partners.
Every summer, yeah. Okay, so that will continue going on?
Mm-hmm.
Good, okay.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to add gratitude, y'all know the story of the orange post-it from July of 2016, so I agree, Mary, this team has come amazing ways in, in our crisis management. Two things that I think are really important to note as part of the onboarding that Jim and Kate talked about, we are continuing to require our new administrators to have the online incident command training, Jim?
Homeland Security, yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
And I knew that if I said something, you would assist with.
It's name training, yeah, yeah.
But the importance of the work that, that Jim and his team have led in training all of us in incident command, and again, that will be on display clearly on June 13th, we really utilized, that, that is exactly the way that we work through everything, and some of those incidents we had this year, especially around racial harm, that's exactly how we set up, is incident command, and we worked with our partners through, through that, so that's been amazing learning, and it's important that we continue to stay up to date in that. The second thing that, that you've already talked about, but I just want to note, the after-action reports, we, we had it more informally, and we have been really clear about making sure that we have the debriefs afterwards, and then we bring those back to the district crisis response team to take a look, to say, okay, what was learned, and is some of these lessons, are some of the lessons that were learned, do they need to come back to the full administrative team? So, that'll be some of the continued work that's done, but that was a huge development this year, that's been really good.
I'll also add that I've had the opportunity, I think, sit in on two tabletop exercises the last few years, and then the full-scale reunification, and looking forward to the next one. I, it, it is amazing when you're put on the spot and they give you a timer, and you, you have to decide who needs to know what, when, what's the order of operations, it, it's, it really makes you think as if you're in crisis mode, and the full-scale operation, if anybody is still interested, can you say the date again?
June 13th.
I believe we need to let Martha know if you plan to attend, to see it from beginning to end, to kids getting reunified with parents.
Yep, I think there's an email that went to the board on May 3rd from Joan Heisey, and yeah, if you could, either way, RSVP either way, and that way we'll know, obviously, if we have more, if we have a quorum of the board, we'll want to be sure that that gets posted as well.
It is so much more than that big binder, so I just want to thank everybody who's been involved, Joe McCall's been very helpful in organizing all of our community, partners who have come in and helped us look at it as a whole, it is really helpful to me as a board director to be able to talk to our community about what our safety and crisis plans are, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the review of the preliminary budget for 2022-23 with Executive Director of Business Services, Julie Sink.
Good evening, tonight, I thought I would be able to come here and have a little bit better news than what I do right now. As we all know, the legislature did not do anything at this point, and it's very disappointing, I would say, for many of us looking for some additional funding from the state with the surplus that is out there. I think they had agreed to a mil, a billion dollars in education funding, and they could not come to any consensus, and so there is not a bill, and so unless they go into special session, we may not see anything. And I'll probably be, if they do go into special session, I would guess, it'll be something similar to like what happened last year, when it's June 30th, before you're going to really find out what, what that impact is.
So, email your legislators.
Yes, definitely, email your legislators. Right now, is what I'm reading, and I'm sure many of you are reading, that the governor and the House are interested in, the Senate may not be, we'll see what ends up happening. I think it's about, what I heard, eight out of 10 years, they've had to go into special session. So, we'll start with what we know today, and that's kind of what we have to do at this point. If there is additional funding that comes, that will have to be, especially if it comes after the board approves a preliminary budget, that'll have to go into some sort of a revised budget after July 1st. So, we'll start with what we know today, this is the district's framework for our future, we budget based on these core values, missions, and strategic directions. We've talked quite a bit about our budget context, and we know that the district has a slowing enrollment growth, and I know we'll hear an update on that after this. We know that our state funding has not kept up with inflation rate of almost 7%. We do definitely have workforce challenges with unfilled positions in the district, and that continues to hold true, and I know that we are struggling even today with finding substitute teachers and filling classrooms. Our COVID relief dollars are certainly one-time funds in the district, and so those dollars are slowly, are being spent, and they're not being backfilled with anything at this point, and so we'll be showing some dollars there that will have some needs, or some programs that'll have some needs due to that. We have underfunded mandates, if we, as we go through this, you'll see that cross subsidy is, continues to widen in special education. We have, we do acknowledge, due to the pandemic, that we have increased needs in mental, SEL, mental academic needs throughout the district. We know we have some aging technology, our online curriculum costs are increasing much higher than our textbooks. This is the process and criteria used for our budget planning, aligning our budget, as I used to talk about, to our strategic directions, and the financial integrity and impact of the decisions in the district, identifying any needs or efficiencies throughout the district. All our leaders had an input into those decision-making, we definitely had themes for prioritizing our decision-making, our student academic needs, our SEL needs, district safety, and employees to support those departments. We weren't able to fulfill all of those needs with the current budget that is being presented, and so I just want to acknowledge that, even though there were needs, that we were not able to fulfill those. Decision-making and recommendations through shared leadership led Dr. Stallow and, as all of our teams have been working on that. Our enrollment projections, you can see that we are projecting an enrollment increase of about 70 students next year, and that is included in this budget process, this is what we have looked at for quite a while, these numbers, and hoping that we can maintain those. We know with an increasing interest rates, and that may change the home market, but as we work through these next several months, the feds are anticipated to increase interest rates two more times this year, and so that impact could impact our enrollment as well. Our 22-23 revenue updates, 2% on the basic formula, is in this budget, we know we have those 70 additional students. We did have a small special ed and cross subsidy for the current year, or for FY '23 of about $100,000, that's included in this budget, that was the legislators' attempt at some additional funding for our district, that'd end up being about $100,000. We do have some COVID funding used to offset some, some expenditures, so we'll continue to use those dollars for one more year to help the district's budget. We are seeing an increase in our activity revenue to pre-COVID amounts, and so we had decreased those in the current year, and so we're seeing an increase in those revenues, and so we anticipate that will continue. Again, we still don't know what that state budget will be, and right now, it's, if nothing happens, it will be nothing, there'll be no additional dollars. These are expenditure budgets, these are the assumptions that we have, we have a four-year salary and benefit increase, and we do have some salary market adjustments that are in the current budget, and so that is a change from the last time that the board has looked at that, these expenditure assumptions. We know that we have increases in transportation, and along with that, we've made some adjustments to increase the fuel clause, we haven't had to do that for quite a while, and now this year we have increased transportation costs due to that fuel clause, and anticipate that again for next year, so that is in the budget. Increase in fuel, gas, and utility costs, and so our generators and those types of things that need those fuels, we anticipate those costs will increase as well. We talked a little bit about those increased costs of curriculum. Increased costs of supplies, materials, paper, we have not increased the supply budgets of our buildings, our grounds, or any of those areas, however, we know that inflation has impacted those areas as well, and so we do, we do let you know that we are recognizing that there'll be increased costs without an increased expenditure budget. And we are anticipating that the district will fill all open positions, so the budget is based on that, and whether we can or not is another separate piece of this, but we are anticipating, as far as the budget goes, that we will fill all those open positions. Our 22-23 potential COVID expenditures, we do have S R 3 5% funds of $1,610,000, which will utilize our Laker Online of $330,000, and the Guidance Counselors for $740,000 to cover, that will be the two pieces that we will utilize those funds for. We currently use COVID funds for those as well, just a different S R funds that we've received for the current year. So, we currently, and I have this in red, we are still working on this, we've estimated we have about $550,000 remaining on June 30th for S R 3 funds that we could potentially use to offset some, some additional expenses for next year. So, we may come to you with a different number at the final, for the final budget, as we work through that. We've gone through this, and I, and this is the Laker Online recommendation for secondary only, so we will add another 2.4 classroom FTE, a .5 special ed, a .5 secretarial, and a .25 student support, that will be the $330,000 that we're spending on that Laker Online. If we need additional students over 60, the, come, they will come back to you and request additional staff for that need. And we also have additional staffing recommendation of an increase in English learner of 1.2 FTE, and classroom FTE of 1.3, and MNCAPs of 1.0, and that is offset by the additional students attending from our Farmington partnership. Other recommendations for the expenditure budget is $25,000 for, that was being spent out of community ed and is now being spent out of the general fund for an assistant athletic direct, activity director. This isn't a new expense, but it's a general, now moved to the general fund. We talked a little bit about the Laker Online, we are, we also have a technology needs, so utilizing some one-time emergency connectivity funds of about $400,000 for the first year of a lease in FY '23, and then in FY '24, '25, and '26, the general fund will need to pick up that expense. And curriculum, we're increasing that expenditure budget. And curriculum, we're increasing that expenditure budget by $250,000. $50,000 would be offset by supply budget reductions. And so we'll be reviewing that again as we look at those COVID funds that I talked about just previously. Our general fund revenues, as you can see, the majority of it is from state sources, $75 million. Our federal sources are $4.1 million. Majority of that is COVID funds. Over half of that is COVID funds. State special education, $11,737,000 in revenue. And then our local sources is almost, is $20,756,000. These are general fund expenditures by program. And you can see as we go through, the biggest piece of that pie is the elementary and secondary regular instruction closely followed by our state and federal special education. So if you look at our total education for K, really pre-K-12, it's almost 75% of our budget. The remainder of instructional and pupil support services also support our students. And we have administration, insurance, site and buildings for our 13 buildings. And we have a small sliver of vocational instruction. So you, as you know, most of this is based around our students and how we can support them. I like to put up the state special ed expenditures of $18,889. And I'll quickly go back to this revenue piece of $11,737 for state special ed. That's the revenue. And if we go to our expense of $18,889, the difference between those two areas is what is called the cross subsidy. That is the money coming out of the general fund to support those special ed services. And so what we have been asking our legislators is to, is to fund that. And so if they do come back into special session, that is what we're asking them to do is fund that cross subsidy. For us, it's over $7 million for next year. Although, and like I said earlier, we received about $100,000 this year. It certainly didn't do help us as much as we would have liked to have seen that or need that to help the district. And the majority of this, again, is staffing, and so the majority is salary and benefits. This is our preliminary general fund budget. I do have a calculated fund balance on the side of 8.5%. This is slightly better, just for a few other, few reasons of returning to normal in our revenue for activities. We reviewed our special ed and made sure that we were receiving the maximum money we could receive there as well. So as we go through this whole process, it just gets tightened up, and so we know exactly what those will be. The majority under A, the general fund under A, that is the, those are the areas that we can use these funds for educating our students. And you can see all of them, although we assign them for different areas, they all can be used and be unassigned if the board chooses. And so that's why we calculate the fund balance on that total of $9,873 under the final column of estimated balance versus the total dollar. Under restricted funds, we do have our student activities, our targeted services and area learning center, staff development. All of these are restricted funds, and there's laws saying how we must spend these dollars. And so they're not available to be spent any other way than by how it is, by what the law states. And so as we go through these, if you have any questions, you can let me know. A couple of things, and I've had questions about this as we talked about it with the facilities, or the finance committee. The estimated balance is about 1.7 million dollars higher than the estimated balance for the FY '22 budget. And that is because we are acknowledging the savings that the district has for unspent positions that were, money that was not spent this year due to open positions. So that is recognized in this beginning balance. This is the FY '24 budget, 2023-24. If the legislature does nothing, we are looking at a fund balance of about 3% if there aren't any other reductions in expenditures or increases in revenues. I also want to talk a little bit about funds 2 through 25. The general fund handle, we talk about that, and the majority of our discussion is always about the general fund. But we do have several other funds that the district tracks. And the first one we want to talk about is our food service budget. Food service is not part of the general fund. And so student payments for lunch accounts goes into a separate fund, and those staff and the food costs come out of that food service fund. You can see our estimated revenues are not quite as high as they have been in the past. As you know, the district for the past two years has received revenue from the state and federal government to pay for school lunches with rising costs in food and other supplies, materials, and labor costs. And we anticipate those expenditures to increase. And we just don't know what those revenues will be right now. It appears that we will be, students will be paying for lunch again for next school year. For community education, this fund pays, is a fund for, our kids company runs through community education, all of our adult basic ed programs, pre-K programs, school readiness, and early childhood family ed. Those are all community education programs. And so this program was really hit hard by the pandemic. And you can see that the fund balance went down significantly, or it has been going down significantly for the past two years. And they anticipate that reversing for next year. I did have a discussion with a couple of our community ed members. Our, we have a waiting list in several of our schools for our kids company program this summer and for next year. We just can't get the staff. We would not have a waiting list if we could find staff. But right now, we do have a waiting list because we just don't have the staff to support all those children. And so they're still continuing to advertise and look for people to help with that program. If they're able to find people, then they will allow those waiting lists to be part of the program. But I think the majority of them have some sort of a waiting list right now. But that has returned as much to normal as it has in the past. It is still fewer students attending simply because of the staffing issue. So if you don't have any questions about community ed, we'll go on. You can see our building construction fund, where we plan to spend that down to, there isn't, and won't be any funding for next year. Our debt service fund, where we pay for all of the bonds. That, you can see that revenue and expense there. Our total trust fund. The trust fund is our current HRAs in our district that we're paying for employees. And that is about $600,000 in revenues. And it's a small expense at this point. A lot of our staff are not vested in that program, just started in 2010, I believe. Our custodial fund, this is revenue in and out for fundraisers and those types of things that go to other nonprofit organizations. Our internal service fund, 20. This, the district is self-insured for health and dental, and this is the fund. The money must be spent, recognized in this fund and spent out of this fund. And so you're seeing that sick overload, over $16 million in our health and dental insurance. It does have a very healthy fund balance at this point. And so it's a good place for that fund balance to be. Our revocable trust, OPAB 25, it shows a negative amount, but we do have assets in that fund of over $8 million. What's not funded is the implicit rate subsidies. And so the district is in a good position in that fund, although it does show the negative implicit rate subsidy. It's the requirement of our auditors to show it that way. So our district overall budget is over $161 million overall. Any questions? I think you've heard this several times, and so, anybody? We've got some big things to think about.
I mean, no, I was just gonna say, yeah, we have. I mean, I think for the public standpoint, this is the third time I've seen the presentation. I think we had it in FLIRP, and then the finance group, community group. And I will just say, from the community group, I think it was really kind of enlightening for them. Would you say, I mean, to kind of understand that there's a lot of complexity sometimes here, and just where everything can be spent. And there are a lot of questions, like, why can't you just use that money? You know what I mean? Like where you, we just have to say that these are the rules, and you know. So there was a lot of good explaining, I think. You know, they've had six hours, maybe? And I think now they kind of feel like they have a pretty good understanding of it, which I think is important. So I think they realize they're like, well, we want to help. You know what I mean? That was really kind of what, so I think going forward, that will be helpful as we look for solutions and things like that, is to use them. There's, you know, six, seven people that, from our community that have invested time in doing that. So I think it'll be good moving forward as we ask for feedback and that kind of things. But, you know, I'll just say, I think, I hope the state comes up with something. I don't, you know, I don't have a lot of faith in that, to be quite honest. And, you know, the fact that we, by our budget, are overspending, our revenues is nothing that we can sustain for very long. So I think you see that in the second year, so, you know. I think we'll have to start a process at some point here relatively soon about addressing that, so.
I have a question. The S R 3 funds, the, I think it was 500, is that in here? I figured it was.
No.
No, it is not in here, because you don't know where to put it yet. Okay, that's TBD, but we know we're getting it.
We already have been allocated the funds. We don't have them. The only way to receive the money is to spend it first.
Got it.
So you have to spend it in order to receive it. So we've been allocated the funds.
It'll be neutral, essentially.
Right, it is.
I see what you're saying.
But if the district could
But resources.
Offset some additional general fund dollars with that money, that would actually give you another half a million dollars of fund balance.
Just delaying the problem.
Delays it. We in the industry are calling it the COVID cliff. Because so many school districts are seeing a big drop off for '23, '24.
Yeah. How about, can you talk to us a little bit about how you're calculating the increased costs? You know, whether it's a flat, almost 7% with inflation, or what kind of assumptions you've made around that?
We, we did talk about that in the past when we went through those recommendations. We do the four-year average salary and benefit increases.
Yeah.
Transportation costs, we know what they are, but we also have looked at prior years when fuel prices were this high and made an adjustment for that. We do have several months of this year as well of what those costs are, so we were able to utilize that as well to anticipate what those costs will be for next year. Increase in fuel, gas, utility costs. That, we looked at the increases for the current year and applied them into next year as well. If we didn't have something, we made sure it was at least a minimum of 5%.
Okay.
Increased cost of curriculum, most of the time, we knew what they would be, and so those are allocated in there. We didn't calculate supplies, materials, paper, because we just have that. We only have X amount of money for that allocated. So we'll be getting less, is really what I'm trying to say for next year.
Got it. And then just to kind of reiterate again, because we have talked about it at the table a lot, but I just want to talk about it in the community, that the Laker Online piece is cost-neutral to even beneficial to our schools. So it's just an opportunity to share that.
And part of that, you know, as we've looked at the question of do we run it or not, right, there's a risk either way. But the risk of losing the students that we surveyed to determine if they wanted to be a part of it, we felt that risk was going to be detrimental financially. So at this point, we still believe that we want to and need to offer it to our students as an option because we're afraid they'll go elsewhere if we don't, and we'll lose those students.
That was my one question, what's the timeline for those students getting enrolled?
Dan, can you?
Can you probably answer that?
Yep, Dan's coming up to answer the question about the registration process for Laker Online, and Dave Brown is also joining him. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Dr. Stallow, board members. The question was registration. So, so right now, we are, we are currently in the process. We've surveyed all of our families and are actually building out that list now. In terms of, in terms of timelines, so that list will be ready to go actually tomorrow at our Learning Leaders Meeting. We have a very strong response to that list. From this point, we're going to look at, then, we know, we know that our families, who our families want to, want to come back to Laker Online or go in person. And then what we'll do is, we'll look at, we'll look at our families that are interested on our waiting list. So that's where we'll go to next. And then once we process our waiting list, we'll look at what the potential is for our general enrollment. And so preliminary numbers right now, just as I've been analyzing this data, is we may likely have very few, if any, spots for open enrollment based on our staffing. We have enough interest in returning families as well as our waiting list to look at, to look at, filling that for next year. So that's kind of where we are in terms of Laker Online registration.
Actually, while we were meeting, while Julie was presenting and mentioned on that particular slide about the 60, what Dave is alluding to, is he mentioned to me that we're approaching that number. We anticipate approaching that number already. So one of the things that we haven't done a lot of is any marketing or advertising of that. And actually, Kristi Muspman and I have been in communication about the possibility of doing such a thing. So we may be quickly approaching that number and then considering our next steps with regard to that.
Thank you.
Follow-up questions or comments?
I'd just like to clarify if those waiting students are our own students at the high school, so they're not coming from out of the district.
Thanks. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Julie. Thank you for the assistance from the back of the room as well. Next up, we have enrollment staffing and class size update for 2022-23 from Director, Executive Director of Administrative Services, Jim Quarram.
Board chair, board members, Dr. Stallow, good evening. There's been a lot of questions and a lot of discussion around class sizes. And so I wanted to take my time today just to go over a couple of things. I know I've gone over it with you before, either in the new board member workshop or at some time during one of the board meetings over the last couple of years. But I think it's an important time to do that as well, just to give everybody some grounded data in class sizes and where we're at. So with that, where we start in the elementary is looking at class size targets. Our targets are listed there administratively. We went through that process several years ago to come up with those class size targets by grade level. And then we have something called a discussion cap. So the first time that we look at staffing in February or March, it's just math, right? We take the number of students that we have by grade level. We roll them all up. We do the math to try to hit the target. And then, as we go through the process, we begin to look at a lot of other factors as we go through the weeks and months. One of the conversations that we have and some of the data that we look at is what I affectionately call the "yeah buts." Because if you say to a building principal, okay, you have three sections in fourth grade. If you have one of those unique fourth grades, one of the things Patrick would tell me is, yeah, but you don't understand. I got this, this, and this, and this grade, right? So we talk about what that is, whatever those factors are within there. And we begin to go from doing And we begin to go from doing math to thinking about real kids in seats in a classroom, right? So that's sort of the process. These are the numbers that we use, and we call it a discussion cap for that reason, that some years, that discussion cap might be more than that grade level should maybe have based upon the student demographics in there and the needs that are in there. And other years, you might be able to pop it over one or two in order to have some efficiencies in your staffing. So at the elementary level, this is where we start. In all of our calculations, I think one of the things that's important for everyone to understand is that we only use classroom teachers in that math. We don't use all the other licensed staff. Many of us have a teaching license. We don't, we don't count ourselves. We don't count other teachers on special assignment, social workers, ancillary support, licensed staff are not included in that calculation. This is real teachers in front of kids divided into real students. So that's what we do in the elementary level, just to sort of ground us in the process. Here is a historical look at average class size in the elementary. And it's boringly flat, which is good. That means the process was working. If you go back and look, you can see it is, it is almost a straight line for many years in a row. And I would give kudos to the people who are here and Julie's predicting of the number of students each year in order to make that happen as you went through the process. Twenty-twenty-one, there was actually a little bit of a dip. And then through the pandemic process, I don't know how much validity you put into some of that, but with all of the online learning and the moving around, we still were at a, at a very nice twenty-three-point-eight-two in, into this year. Our prediction right now for next year, and this is like the fuzziest of math because we're in May, and, you know, we're waiting for kids to come in and all that has to equalize out over the summer. And we continue to look at that. It still remains right at that twenty-three-point-eight, right now, at least. So I do know that if you look at this and go back to twenty-twenty-one, when we went from staffing on what was expected, we stopped that practice because the slowdown began, and we started the process of staffing to actual. What that does is creates efficiencies, but it also, and it reduces the number of open spaces and sections. But the risk there when you do that, and it does happen, is you will get, at individual grade levels in individual buildings, some unfri, what Julie always refers to as unfriendly class sizes, right? You'll get a thirty-one in fourth grade, or maybe a thirty-two, in a building for a year. But you might also have a third grade section that has twenty-three in it. So when you have neighborhood buildings and you staff to actual number of students, there is a bit of a risk there, and some of that does happen, and it has. And you've heard about it here at, at the board table. But overall, if we take all K-five, the average class size this year is twenty-three-point-eight. If we break it down by grade level this year, what you should see is a line that, that slopes up, you know, as we go through grade levels. And if you did a best fit there, that's what you would have. But again, at certain grade levels, you get some years where you might get a large fourth grade across the district and a small third grade. And that might be in the difference between having twenty-nine or thirty in fourth grade classes, but only having twenty-four, twenty-five in a third grade class across the district, just because of the number of kids. Doesn't mean you can do a lot of shifting of an FTE around because then you end up getting real unfriendly numbers, either high or low, in a building if you move an FTE over somewhere else, right? So all that comes into play as well. But, you know, again, if you did a best fit on there, that we're, I think we're where we need to be as far as that line. So that's elementary. If we look at elementary, middle school, and high school, you can see that the numbers are not substantially different, even though we hear a different story. But you have two very different staffing processes. Elementary really does become a numbers thing. Everybody's licensed the same. You have a hundred and fifty-five sections, and you do the math because everybody has a K-six license, right? That's all we're counting. When you get to the secondary level, it takes on a whole different flavor. You have many, many, many licenses, licensures that you have to take in consideration. Classes become very different. You can have ed tech classes or industrial arts classes or what shop classes, whatever the term you use, of twenty-four. And then you could have a ninth grade English class of thirty-eight, right? So I know that doesn't tell the story when we say twenty-six for an average at the high school because that also includes MINT caps, ALC, online learning. It's all those kids divided by all the classroom teachers. So we're talking at sort of the ten-thousand-foot level here at the district level when we're doing the math. Inside of that, there is a lot of factors. There's a lot of things that go on along with that. But right now, today, the average class size, if you take all the kids and divide them by classroom teachers in the middle school, is about twenty-five. And the average class size at the high school, if you do the same math, is twenty-six-point-three-seven. And I know, I know there are big classes in especially core areas, math science, reading, English, and social studies. Probably a lot in, and in some of the maybe AP classes, you might have some real unfriendly numbers. And we understand that, and we continue to look at that. We've made some adjustments throughout the year to add a little bit here and there to reduce that some. But again, you heard the, the budget presentation. We also have those restrictions there. And to this point, all of our staffing over the last several years has been right sizing. We continue to shoot for those targets. We haven't made budget cuts within the classroom. That's all been right sizing to the numbers that we're trying to, trying to get at, so. Questions of me?
Questions?
Mike, could you possibly provide the, particularly the middle school and high school numbers by core classes versus electives, et cetera? Like you mentioned, English, math, science, et cetera.
I'm sure we could. I don't have that right now. I haven't, I haven't dived into that piece of it yet down, on the core level. But I'm sure the middle school and high school principals would be able to tell me that. They know that pretty well.
I think it would help us put the numbers in a perspective because like you just said, particularly in middle school and high school, it's not going to be reflective of that. The other thing, obviously, in elementary, kindergarten through third grade, you know, that's a, it's a selling point for our district to have smaller class sizes in those areas. I mean, regardless of the budget or whatever, if we are prioritizing where we really want to put it in order to not only benefit the student, but also, but also increase our enrollment, then, then being able to accurately say not only what the staff-to-student ratio is, but also those class sizes and keeping them at a point that's not only manageable for the educators, but also beneficial to the students based upon the makeup of the class is going to be a, a critical item going forward for our district if we're going to retain our growth in those areas. And we all know that, you know, we move them over in elementary, we're, we're, we're going to get them most of the time for their, for their career. And, and we want that. We want to increase enrollment and all that. So I think that would be, it would be helpful for us to kind of focus on, at, at least establish our priorities and also understand where those core classes are in middle school and high school.
Sure. Yep, and we can continue to look at that. To me, I always think, and we have this discussion, Dr. Bezek and I have this every year, we talk about what the denominator is, right? And in the middle school, typically, we've used twenty-nine or thirty. And at the high school, we've used thirty-one or thirty-two. But understanding all the factors in there, to have the discussion about, is that the right one? Or should it be one lower or one higher? Because it makes a big difference when you just change that average class size by a little bit. For example, in the elementary, for almost every point one that you want to change that, it takes a teacher, right? And so then you're looking at the cost of that. It's not, it's not an exact one-for-one, but it takes, if you want to go from twenty-five-point-three-seven or whatever I had as a overall, and, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-three-point-eight, and you want to go to twenty-three-point-seven, that will take an additional higher, right? So that's kind of the way I think about it. It's more like a, probably a point, it, it's, it's not exact, but it's rough math that'll help you understand the, the impact that, that would have not only on the district, but financially as well, if you want to lower that by, let's say, a whole student in each grade. That would take maybe nine additional teachers.
And I get that from the averages, if you just put the numbers out flat. What I'm interested in is some key areas, like the core classes, and then the early elementary in particular.
Right.
If we focused on that, with, then these average, I mean, these averages are basically aggregate. And obviously, an average, the very definition is fifty percent of them are higher and fifty percent of them are lower, right? So it's hard to make a decision on this aggregated average rather than looking at the actual needs and prioritizing those needs so we're not just making this blatant decision that, you know, we add a teacher, it increases this much. And then I think it makes a big difference where you're adding the additional educator and where you're actually focusing your resources.
Yeah, and I would say.
So I'd like to see this broken down a little bit more.
And we can do that. What I would say is, our, especially in the elementary, well, they all do. But we, we meet often. Patrick could contest multiple times for many, many hours. And that is exactly the discussion the administrators have about, if this is our finite number of FTE, how do we move them around? Who has need? And there's some pretty lively debates amongst them about how we move those FTE around. Who has the greatest need? How does that happen? And we've gotten to the point where someone will say, I get it. My class size is really low in third grade. Patrick, you really have a need in fourth grade. I'll, I'll give that up. Because otherwise, it's a, that's the balancing act and all the discussion that they go through for hours and hours to look at that. Otherwise, you have to find a way to add FTE, right? And we're sort of the gatekeepers of that when it comes to the budget. In order to address what you're saying, if you want to lower class sizes in kindergarten, unless you allocate more dollars, we have to take it from somewhere. And either that's from another classroom or from licensed support staff and use that to move into the classroom in order to, for instance, lower class size in kindergarten.
I just have one additional qualification, if you don't mind. Do these average class sizes by level and every, all the numbers showing, assume that we've fulfilled the, the FTE positions that we, that are currently open? Or is this, is this based on current day staffing and resourcing?
It's not about individuals. It's only math related to the number of kids divided by a, a number of staff in order to try to hit the target, and that's the number we use. For instance, this year, we have a hundred and fifty-five-point-five FTE in the elementary. Three of those are Laker Online. They go away. And right now, based upon the math, we're at a hundred and fifty-five FTE. So we're actually moving two-point-five FTE back into a regular classroom that was in Laker Online, and that's part of what Julie talked about with the additional FTE in, in classes. So it's numbers, it's not people. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
I just know we have open FTE that didn't include Laker Online.
Well, that would definitely, I mean, it's authorized FTE. That's what we're looking at.
Okay, so it's authorized FTE, not maybe exactly what we have today. It's authorized FTE.
Do we have any certified positions that aren't filled?
I don't know if we have any right now.
There's been like one at certain times. There hasn't been a lot of openings at certified.
That's what I was questioning. I wasn't sure where the number, the baseline number was coming from.
I don't, I don't believe we have any classroom FTE open right now in the elementary.
Our challenge with unfilled has been support staff.
Absolutely.
Support, it's not, it's not going to affect these numbers then?
No.
So I just want to be sure that we have board direction. I heard a request. So are we looking, is, is the board want to have a conversation that the targets aren't where you want them to be? I just want to give, I just want to give really clear direction because I know the workload that it takes right now on a weekly basis to figure out the staffing. So if there's going to be additional work that's requested and required of HR, I just want to have clear direction from the board on that.
I would, so, you know, I, there are so many questions that I could ask as we're, as we're thinking about this, but I feel as though it, it ventures toward management versus governance, right? And, and our role, because there's part of me that wants to come see you and literally show me each building and each grade level. And I, you know, I'm, the statistician in me wants to see the mode and the median, right? How many are above and how many are below? And, and how many do we have the most of relative to what our numbers are? It's minutia, it's too much. I think I can, when I have an opportunity to be in a building and you and I sit down with a principal, I think if I send an email ahead of time, can you have some of those numbers for me? I think that won't be that difficult for them to do. And I think it's something we can be getting at other times. It feels like, it feels like an ask that's unnecessary for me. I'm comfortable with where we are. As much as I want to know to be able to respond to the kids who were here two weeks ago, as much as I want to know exactly what's happening with the numbers at Jeffres Pond, right? We see it. So I'm satisfied.
Other board directors?
Long-winded answer.
Are we asking for additional work or numbers to be brought forward at this point?
The one note I made was about middle school and mostly actually more for me, high school core averages. I don't know that I need to see them. I just know that that's probably an ongoing concern you guys have every day, you know? So that was my one question was around core averages.
Because that's where you're hearing the concerns of the higher class sizes.
Well, I think it's important.
Yep.
You know, that's, I think that's super important. But I don't know, you know, to me, I would look at it and say, okay, you, you do your summer planning, and especially at the high school level, for what, what's optimal. And that might involve other conversations around, I'm speculating here, okay, but around social, emotional learning and building, you know, built. Or, sorry, what's the ninth grade?
Bar.
Bar, sorry, around bar. You know, that, making that a priority to create those relationships with the freshmen coming in. So I know you're having those conversations. I mean, my push there would be keep having them and keep finding, you know, finding ways to, make those core averages lower, if you can, and create those strong, really. I know you have all those conversations, particularly in the summer, but it's not my place to manage them.
Stacy or Julie, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and I think, from my standpoint, you know, I, to me, I look kind of big picture and I see that we're overspending by three million dollars this year and next, you know, coming up year. And then, you know, six million, and we've already made five million in cuts. So, over previous years, you know, and I think any change we make as it relates to this is going to cost more if we're trying to lower class sizes. So then I guess I would ask, you know, and I think this is going to lead down to the budget discussion that we need to have, is then what's not going to happen? Because we can't continue to not be financially solvent. So I, I agree. I mean, I think class size is a big deal. I think people look at that. I mean, you know, it's important. But in the same sense, I don't see the funding here to continue to sustain what we even have. So, and I think you saw it in the survey results. Our staff know that we're bare bones. We've been saying we're bare bones. We're bare bones. So I don't see a lot of solution to this. I, I see either increased funding with a referendum, or I see we're going to be doing budget cuts here relatively soon. So that's my doom and gloom. And because we're saying that we're going to be going into budget cuts, I'd like the greater detail so we understand the impact of those budget cuts and if we can avoid cutting in areas of core curriculum and early learning. And we have that choice and we can prioritize. And I think it's, I think it's.
And we have that choice and we can prioritize, and I think it's, I think it's worthwhile us taking a look at it and understanding the impact to educational outcomes. Because when I walk into a physics course in ninth grade, or physical science, or whatever they were calling it, and see forty-two kids, that's, that's a lot different than walking in, I mean, with all the respect, I love industrial ed and tech ed, but that's a lot different than walking into a freshman woods class of twenty-five or twenty-six kids, and knowing those two are averaged together and we're equally weighting that, that spend. And, and I, I would like to see the core classes broken out, because we have to prioritize what's in the best interest and understand the pros and cons and the risks of how we're doing that.
That is the math. You're right. That is the math. It's the way we do it. So.
Is that something that flirp? Would that be a flirp?
Well, I think as we're getting, as we continue down the budgeting-
As we get closer, yeah.
As we continue down the budgeting path, I think it's something we can-
Yep, we can actually-
It is a request.
Have to continue to be looked at.
Yeah, it is a request at the Finance Advisory Committee to talk about staffing. That was one of the things they brought up. So I think that would be an appropriate place to talk about it.
And now's a good time to talk about our HR staffing, which operates with seven employees.
Five.
Five, sorry, thought seven. You say it.
They do the work of seven.
You do the work of many more than seven.
There's a lot of places. Tech is-
Yeah, I mean, you're not alone.
Yeah, there's, and I, I would just say, in all areas, we are bare bones. If you look at, you've used the number before of our administrative costs versus, you know, our whole budget, and it's, it is less than every other, virtually any other district. Right? So it's not just HR, it's everybody, right? So, but we got, we got great people that work really, really hard.
We do, and I think this discussion just synthesizes so many of the presentations tonight. And we have work to do, not only looking at our budget for cuts and/or raising funds, but for educating our community, because if class size is an issue in their mind, we have to explain, boy, there's just not a lot of wiggle room to change that class size. We're going to need your help. We're going to need your buy-in. Because even if we cut in other areas, it's going to be hard to find spots to cut, and that's going to create its own set of issues.
Well, and I think, I mean, you can make an argument, I mean, at this point, counselors, I mean-
I know, we need so much help.
You know,
Right.
You just, you can start to go down a long list and to prioritize, so.
So this is more than adjusting by number. This is a bigger issue I think we have to address soon here as a board, so.
Well, we can continue to educate. This is a good place to at least get a foundation on how we do it, and then questions come up related to that, so.
Okay, thanks so much.
Jim, do you have clear direction? Because I'm not sure that I do.
Well, Neil-
I, I'm fine with this right now.
I'm fine, too.
I think we're going to get into more detail as we get-
At this point, you don't need, okay.
Down the road, I think a lot of, a lot of that information, we will be pulling out and taking a look at. It is something that's always a priority, especially at the secondary level of those core classes. That's what they hear about from parents. That's what they see when they're doing their staffing, is the size of some of those core classes. So there's value in that. But we're not changing any targets, right? That's what I hear.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the 2022-23 District Goals Recommendation with Dr. Stallow.
Thank you. In your board packet, we have a draft of the yearly cycle of district continuous improvement and where we are at this point of the year. And as you take a look at this, I, one sheet of paper doesn't even come close to sharing the number of hours and the work that the folks that are sitting in this room have done. When you look under Strategic Direction Number One, Dan leads that first bullet. Chrislyn leads the second. Sam leads the third. Under Strategic Direction Number Two, Julie leads the first one. Jim leads the second. Under Strategic Direction Three, Marcus has taken the lead of that. Strategic Direction Number Four, Patrick with LeAnn and Jamie have taken the lead on that. Strategic Direction Number Five, Deb has taken the first bullet, which was really that new strategic direction from our most recent strategic planning process. That was the, that was the strategic direction that was changed. That first part is really around the social, emotional learning. The second part, we heard tonight from Kate and Jim about our crisis management work. And then that final strategic direction that Christie and Chrislyn have really taken a lead on. So I just, you know, we know that the, the visual that we all see, it's our district system of continuous improvement through a shared leadership lens. And these folks, after the, over the last seven years, as we've built this process and this system, have really done an amazing job of working through, first of all, a charter process, which was really started as a Plan Do Study Act, where they get a team around them to then work all year. You see a review and a report at mid-year of the status update and the progress of each team. At the end of the year in April, you saw the end-of-the-year final document. The team, since that time, each team has worked to take a look at their recommended action plans. You don't see that represented on this sheet, but there's another layer of documents that we have that they've really come together to say, hey, here's the next step in action that we have to do, and then try to consolidate that to one statement that really provides that, here's the district goal, here's our priority work for the year. I think the greatest way that Studer's going to help us moving forward is, is one of the places that we need to continue to grow. You know, we've had an evolving district scorecard over the years, and we've done a lot of process metrics. We've done metrics in terms of gap closing measures and student achievement and stakeholder survey, as you heard Chrislyn share tonight. And I think in some of these areas, that'll be a place to get tighter, and I think Studer's going to do a great job of really helping us with some of those metrics in each area. So tonight I present to you the, the hours of work of teams, of input from multiple stakeholders. We have charters. We have summaries under each of these. The team is here tonight. I, I want to thank them for coming this evening. I did ask them to be here this evening. In case you had any specific questions on any of the priority work statements in front of you, just as a reminder, the light blue at the end of each one is the Reimagine Minnesota Strategy that we also want to be paying attention to, just to make sure that we're, we're continuing to work on those nine strategies as a metro district as well. So with that, I want to open it up to see if you have any questions or comments. Again, we also use, you know, information from our advisory councils around this as we look at what is that next layer of work that needs to be accomplished. We always want to look at this and say, you know, is there anything that's operational and can be taken off the list? And, because some of these things we have been working on for a while. And we only feel comfortable taking it off when, when we really feel we have a solid system that any stakeholder in the district would say, yes, this is the system. So some of them, we're continuing to deepen and work on them, but wanted to share this with you today, and we certainly are willing to take any questions that you have.
I'm going to jump in first here, and be rude. I just want to say it was interesting to read this compared to where it was last year. Because on first read, I thought, oh, how much is really different? And so I pulled the old one out, and you can really see how sometimes it's a subtle word change with a big impact, or it's clarification, or it's taking it to the next level. I also want to thank everybody on the team who's worked on this, because I really felt this year that the presentations we've been given throughout the year has helped us have a context of where we were and where we're headed. So when I read this, I could hear, what are our next steps with East End? What are our next steps with MTSS? Because you've come here and you've shared that with us. So I just want to, to, to say that that consistency, that ongoing information to the board, and the clear tracking and the improvement is noticed and appreciated. And thank you for the time you put into that, that, that made this document mean a lot more to me and easier to understand. So thank you. I'll open it up to other comments or questions. Or none.
I, I'll just thank everyone for the effort. I know it's, this is like one page, and Dr. Stallow talked about it, but, I mean, I know there's hours and hours of work that go into this. And I know, you know, there's a lot of passion behind what's, what's here. This, a lot of times drives, I mean, it is driving the work in, in our goals for the year, and how it, you know, how it relates back to what we do as, as board members, too, and, and where we put our focus and the fact, the strategic directions, you know, are easily explained, I think. Which is nice, when honestly, when someone from the public comes and asks questions, like, what does this mean? We have a document like this that says what this means, and what's the work behind it. And I know there were years, well, let's just say early on. I think the process, to have this process is so very important, to have reflective work and to see where we are at. And it allows us to take a snapshot of time of where we are at right now, and to be able to see where the work is going. And I know many, there were many years, like you've said, that stuff stays on here, but a word changes, and that word means a lot. And so I just want to, to recognize, I think there's a ton of work that goes into this, and how important it is, and the fact that we have this document that can take this moment in time and say, this is where we're at, and this is where we need to go, I think is really important. There hasn't been a lot of tracking in, before Dr. Stallow. And I think, how do you, how do you know how you're doing? You know, as a school board member? I, I had another board member from another, another district ask me that. It's a big question, like, how do you know your experience is improving? To have these systems in place and to have these goals in mind and to be able to track it, see how we're doing, whether it's through the survey of how people think, or, you know, all the different reports that we get, I think is, has been very transforming for the district to be able to continue to work on. Because as change happens, the fact that we have these systems in place, I think is really important to continue what we have and to continue to improve, so, thank you.
One of the things I think is so important with that is, you know, we hear, and I've heard it in every, every school district that I've been in, is there's too many initiatives. There's too much happening. And that's one of the reasons, and Martha gets sick of me asking for this, but I always make sure that this is the backside of our strategic plan. Because I think you're right. I think it helps people, that there's a ton of work here. But we've worked really hard, and this team in front of you has worked relentlessly on alignment and integration of the work. And our goal, through our building instructional leadership teams, is that our teachers and our staff, too, understand and, more importantly, are a part of this work. And that's why I think one of the things that we're getting even better at is each of these areas is led by a core admin team, but we're doing better at getting a larger group around that and getting input from students and from staff and from families along the way. I think that MTSS team that Deb and Chrislyn have led is just a great example of a pretty large leadership team made up of administrators and staff across the district. And, and that'll be work that the team will continue to do to make sure that all those voices, including those of our students, are heard.
Anybody else? Mentioning students, I just, I notice as I kind of skim over it again, it, it's really all driven, no matter how it's stated, around what's best for students, and it keeps us focused, so thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you for that, Dr. Stallow.
Thanks, team.
And thank you to the team who does this work continually.
This will come back, then, board members, in June for approval, and will really then be the, the driving, the driving force of the next year. I just want to say one other thing. I love the, the comment made by a couple of board members about one word making a big difference. Because one year it may be, a system was created. And that takes a year, when you have a lot of voices around it. The next year, the change of was created to is being implemented, to is being monitored. So I really appreciate that call out. Thank you, board members. Thank you, team, for being here tonight and for all you do.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, with that, we'll move on to board governance and look at, review some of our policies that are being brought forward for an official first read here, or not so official. The first one is Policy 602, Organization of the School Calendar and School Day. Deb is here if we need to ask questions. I noticed the only change, I think, in there was the addition of the e-Learning Days, so.
I'm sorry, Deb. We'll need you just because, otherwise the mic won't pick up your voice from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
And there's also the striking of the-
Yes, so if you look under School Calendar, under the A part, we no longer have to do that before April 1st of the calendar year. So that was one of the items that we're striking, or we're recommending striking out of the policy. The other portion is, there was an addition to, also on the School Calendar, Number Four, about Labor Day, and then we added the whole section of the e-Learning Days.
Can you just clarify again where the Number Four is? Is it under School Calendar? It didn't print on ours, I don't think.
What is the Labor Day?
I'm looking at Martha.
Maybe it's-
Might have been a different policy, I think.
Oh!
So it was B4 that you were saying was changed?
The Labor Day is there.
And there's no more B4?
And, and what I had written on mine was the school district may begin the school year on any day before Labor Day if the school district agrees to the same schedule with the school district in an adjoining state. So that's the piece.
No, that's B2. She just read B2.
That is not-
Yep, and it wasn't on the previous policy.
Okay, that gets to be-
What is B2, though?
No, it's not the exact number. The school district may begin the school year on any day before-
B, excuse me. What you're looking at is accurate. You should have three bullet, three.
Yeah.
B1, B2, B3. The copy I'm looking at had a B4, and I think it got-
That wasn't on our policy.
And I don't think it was ever originally on the policy, and probably got put on from another one, is what I'm thinking, a typo on our part.
Thank you. Well, now you know we read along with the policy.
I guess so.
Impressive.
I guess so. You're very, way to catch the details.
Any questions or comments while we have her here?
I get, go ahead. No, go ahead, Jonathan.
I was just going to ask about this, about striking April 1st and sort of what the thought process is there. I'm just-
I shall.
Curious that, that we're, we're sort of eliminating the A deadline.
So it goes back to the, the annual school calendar, how many hours of instruction for kindergarten, grades one through six, all of those pieces. And that, so, that was my understanding of the model policy is that we no longer are required to do that. I think you still can do that, but you're not required to. You're still putting in the annual calendar up to five days of instruction provided through online, through inclement weather and whatnot.
Question was just about if the board needs to approve it before April 1st.
Right.
Yep.
And our past, our, our past practice has been actually December-
Yeah.
Right.
Of the year prior.
Okay.
So we didn't feel it needed to be in policy?
We didn't need-
Because our practice was always earlier than that.
Quite a bit sooner.
Yeah, we've always done December.
That's what I thought. I thought it was getting done much sooner.
That's what we did, that's what we did for this current, for next school year. We came out in December, made some revisions, but we adopted the original policy in December for the upcoming school year.
Okay.
Want to put it in there?
So, so does it matter if we keep that in there, just to make sure before planning? I mean, you've got spring break, you've got, you know, things like that, that-
Which is why we always do it so early.
Right.
Because we start getting, parents, parents start calling.
Yeah, so why are you taking the April 1st day out if we beat it up here anyways?
Because we always do it in December or January at the latest. We never would wait until April to do it. Our practice has been to do it that early, so we just didn't feel it was needed anymore.
So, so instead of putting, so no matter what, we're going to beat it. So does it matter if it's not in there? I mean, I, we're not putting any date in there now.
What I'm understanding, Deb, the, I think what I heard you say is the, it probably was in here as a model policy, because perhaps at some point there was a, a rule, or was a state law, or something, that it had to be done by a specific date. And if that has gone, that would be a reason why it would be stricken from policy. I, I kind of, there's part of me that feels like Mary's got a point. It's nice to just, if it's, if we, if the policy says it has to be done by April 1st, but we're usually done with it in December or January at the latest, I can't- but we're usually done with it in December or January at the latest, I can't foresee there ever being a year that we don't have a calendar done by April. But boy, if we didn't, it would sure be good to have a deadline that we had to get it done.
I'm just wondering if adapted annually covers it. Every year we'll vote on the calendar, but if we want more specifics, we can leave it in there.
Well, if we don't do it until June and, or something changes or like, yeah, then, well, no, I wouldn't, but I mean.
Families would never put up with that.
Right, but I, I mean, so it doesn't hurt to keep the date in there. I mean, there's no harm in it. We beat it every year anyways.
I'm, I'm kind of indifferent to leaving the date in there. I mean, to me, it, if anything, it could be something that we get to say, hey, look, folks, we don't have to have it done until April 1st, but we did it for you in January.
It's also a communication piece. So when families want to know the year before, when are you going to tell me when spring break is next year? When are you going to tell me when this happens? That sort of thing. They can look to the policy and say, okay, I won't look until after April 1st. I mean, who cares if it's done in December? The point is, is that no matter what, they, they have something. This is a communication mechanism as well as, you know, you know, setting a deadline we want to beat.
Martha, is there any reason? I see, I know you, you asked Marcus something. Is there any reason that?
There's a couple of, of things. I know that technology.
Can you, can you, sorry. I just want to be sure we're not missing something.
Yep.
Behind the scenes, I know that Lynn puts information in for the next school year in our student information system. So the sooner the better on that. Also, families with vacations, they like to have it actually two years for their time shares.
Right, so we're saying we always do it earlier. The question is, is there any reason that we can't leave this in on October or on April 1?
Absolute deadline, yeah. It's nice to have it earlier for many.
And we always do. Our practice is that we do, which is why we took it out. But we don't need to, if, if the board, if the will of the board.
But what about revisions? Like, we revise calendars all the time while we're.
That is why we bring it to you early. And then if we have to revise it, we always have that opportunity.
The revisions have to adhere to that April 1st date.
Well, that's.
Is that what you're asking?
No, and we revise it whenever we can. I mean, I know.
If we have to, sure.
Right, and so it's been revised, I mean, after this too, so I don't.
If it's the will of the board to keep in April 1st, we certainly can.
It doesn't hurt anything. I'd rather communicate a date to the public and.
All right, we'll make that, we'll make that change and not have that strike down.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts, I think.
All right.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Can I, can I go to e-learning days? Don't go away.
Yep, hang on, Deb. E-learning days.
You're not getting away that easily.
Right, you get the special ed person.
So is this, is this like e-learning days? I know they've been around longer than, obviously we've had these in here and with the pandemic. But just questions about how these were developed? Is this like MDE language? Is it coming from somewhere, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we got some language. And if you recall, we actually brought this topic up this year
Yep.
When we hadn't yet identified that and communicated out.
Right.
So this is additions to the policy moving forward, recognizing that we will implement e-learning days because we now have the authority and the experience doing so.
Only for inclement weather.
Yes, that is.
So we still, even though we were expected to do it during the entire pandemic, we now can only call those for inclement weather. Just want to be clear that everyone heard that. So when we have other things happening and we have used that.
What if there's like a.
Pipe breaking or water main because of weather. It was because of weather in cases. And I think at the high, or the middle school, we were still on the waiver from distance learning to be able to do that.
But now we can only do it for weather.
Correct.
Okay. So.
And those are, that, that is the legislation.
Yep.
That dictates that, statute that dictates that.
So is there anything, and this may be a little bit, Jim, contractually, this is okay with, what we have contractually with teachers as far as, I know we had e-learning day, sorry.
Yeah, the, the five e-learning days.
The first day, the first.
First day is the only exception.
The other day is still, is an exception still. That's what, contractually. And you've worked with, you've worked with the, the union leadership. So the language we have in there, should we call an e-learning day is acceptable.
Yeah, so like the last, like on G is what I'm thinking. You know, each student teacher must be accessible both online and by telephone during normal school hours to assist parent. I mean, like, so that, this has all been gone through stakeholder groups as far.
Yep, and we have a, we have a memo that, a communication that would go out at the beginning of the year that we sent out this year to our families prior to implementing a, a e-learning day due to weather. So we would adopt that same memo. That would be in alignment with this policy and utilize it in the fall.
So if the first inclement weather day is a snow day, you know, no e-learning day, then we have five e-learning days and we have an exceptionally bad winter, are we then going into extra hours for the summer? How do we, what, what happens after five? There's been a few years.
Well, we build in extra instructional hours already in our calendar.
Okay, so.
So prior to having e-learning days available to us, we had to worry about that. But now that we get to count those e-learning days.
So anything beyond that would be a day off?
Less of a concern.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I don't think we've, we've, I think one year we ran close to it.
Yeah, I think there was a year that was really, really cold.
Yeah.
Yep, but now, again, we have the e-learning days.
But now you would be having e-learning days, so we're not running close. Yeah, okay.
The weather's iffy lately, so.
I'm good. I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions on this policy? Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it. Next up is Policy 6031, again with Dr. Edwards, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. I think there were no, there were no changes in that?
Correct.
Okay, any questions while Dr. Edwards is here on that? All right. Next up, Policy 607, Class Size. I noted there was a title change in that policy. Anything else? Any questions? Okay. Policy 609 on Religion with Sam Oak. I did not see a change in there as well. Any questions? Okay. Policy 613.1, Credit Transfer at Prior Lake High School. I noticed a few minor changes. Chris Lynn, anything you want to address in that? I noticed some title changes and the word internship added.
Make the policy align with our.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you for that. Policy 616, School District System Accountability. Dr. Edwards, I noted there were a few changes in there.
Yep, changes, a couple of title changes of note and more aligning with what our practices have been as well. And so a couple of points of emphasis there with regard to the makeup of the committee. And again, the change of Robert's Rules of Orders. It's not run in that way. I'm not thinking of too many committees where that's put into place any longer, except for here at the board table.
Those changes update.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's specific to the reporting, November 15th of each year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, Policy 901.2, Use of Technology for Public Meetings and Events with Kristi Musman. Noticed a title change and a few small wording changes. We'll make you come up from the back.
Yes, no substantive changes for that policy, just title change. And then there's a small cross out that you'll notice where it says, no airing of theatrical or musical performances which are restricted by royalty fees. We, we would never trump that. That's just law, so, okay, just made it more clear there.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that?
I'll just note the age of the policy.
Yeah, no, I just saw that too.
Yeah, that one kind of slipped by me for a while there.
Yeah, we almost missed that one.
Yeah, so we're getting them all.
Yeah. All right. Thank you to everybody for your work on those. It has been a monumental task to get us caught up. I didn't think we'd get there and.
We're not quite there. It's close. It's going to be close. A few will come in July, but it's close.
That's good.
So these will, these will come together, forward at the next meeting as an official first reading then. At this time, we have no first reading policies, of policies. We do have the second reading of policy prior to bringing it forward for a vote on the June 13th School Board Meeting. Policy 509.1 and Policy 513. Is everybody comfortable with those at this point to bring forward to the next meeting for a vote?
What did you just say?
509.1 and 513.
I'm still not comfortable with 509.1, but I have a feeling I'm outvoted, so I'm just going to live with it and discuss it when it comes up again and see what the result is on the overall enrollment, because that's actually what was discussed at other board meetings as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have something else, Stacy?
No.
Okay. Everybody else is comfortable to bring those two forward?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next up, Superintendent Relations. Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. Next up, informational items. I will just say that I want to remind everyone, we are doing the board's self-evaluation. Deadline is the 26th. We need everybody submitted in order for MSBA to go through and create the report for us. So it will be done in time for our board retreat discussion. So please do check your email, find the link to that survey and get it completed by the 26th, which is just a few days away. Thank you.
So, Chair, have, just a couple of things. We mentioned.
I should have started with you.
No, it's fine. We mentioned earlier in the, the meeting, the June 13th, anyone who wants to, and is able to come to the functional exercise, that would be great. So just RSVP to Joan either way if you can. And then just wanted to also remind you, I know you've seen some emails, but the June 21st, the first Southwest Metro Equity Summit is open. And Sam's taken the lead with multiple districts and really the Southwest area on this conference. Really interesting that there's an entire strand. It's mostly for educators, but there is a strand that is really for community folks to also attend. So if that's something you're interested in, you know, we can support registration board members, so just let Sam know what, what you need and what would be helpful with that, but we'd love to have you join us.
What, what, well, June 13th, what time is June 13th? Was the?
June 13th is noon, I believe. Can somebody help me? Noon to 4? Okay.
And what's the 21st?
Sam, will you come up here for a minute? Just the time on the 21st? Thank you. As long as you're here, Sam, we want to be sure you have an opportunity to share.
It is a whole day. It's from 8 to 4 p.m. at the high school.
At the high school.
There is a registration fee if anyone is interested and.
We can support the boards on that.